Let's get started.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee meeting to order on February 7th, 2019. Thank you for those who switched from a Tuesday to a Thursday so that we could let DSEF use the library for their Phone-A-Thon, which I understand was very successful.
Good.
So.
Great.
Excuse me, let's start with, are there any community comments? Seeing none, let's move on to reports. It looks like Rodney, you're the report today.
Yes, I am. I don't think I can give as well-rounded a report as Mr. Smith can, but I will do my best to represent the council. So, thank you for having me, as per usual. We've had a good start to semester two. I know I finished gym for high school forever. And I started a semester of TV media, which I think is going to be really exciting. I've been hoping to take that elective since freshman year, so I'm really glad that I get a chance to take it before I leave the high school.
Are you recording Kio's Corner next week?
I don't know. We haven't gotten that far. I mean, I'll ask Mr. Sweeney about it.
What period?
Oh, I have it...
It might be another class. H-block, no, it wouldn't be.
Maybe it's...
It's the advanced class.
Oh, really? Ah, okay.
It's myself and a bunch of freshmen and sophomores, but...
I gotcha. Good for you, though.
It's still a good class. And everyone's kind of getting back into the routine after exam week, which is nice, you know? Material's starting to pick up again, we're starting to have tests and quizzes again. But it was actually a nice break having the exam week. I think it's nice to take a step back, and we're really grateful. I never got to experience the two-hour exams, but the one-and-a-half has been working out really well, in my opinion. So, in terms of things that the council is doing, we are starting to discuss, or continuing to discuss, the suggestions from the town meetings with cafeteria staff, as well as the administration, the IT department. We've set up kind of various meetings to talk about different suggestions based on categories. And hopefully, after all these meetings, we can update the student body on changes that will be made, or things that we need to talk about, based on their suggestions. Today, after school, we met as a council with a representative from the American Red Cross, because we have our blood drive every year, kind of in conjunction with the Red Cross. And we talked about the blood drive, which is going to be February 28th, which is a little bit earlier than last year. We start sign-ups next week. We recruit people during lunch, and kind of over the announcements, we talk about it. We typically get 50 to 60 students to sign up, and a good portion of those students are able to give blood. When we do sign-ups, we do pre-screening about like height and weight, and different travel restrictions, just so it makes it easier, so kids don't show up on the day of the blood drive and then get turned away. We try and do a lot of that ahead of time, if we can. Anybody who's the age of 16 can donate with a parent's permission. We send out permission slips, and then we hope to get them back a few days in advance, or a few weeks in advance, if we can. And anybody who's 17 or older can donate and volunteer without a parent's permission. We typically like to get a good mix of students in these different ranges, but it tends to be the juniors and seniors that are eligible to donate and volunteer. It's one of our biggest events as a council. We always have like music and snacks, and it's a really good atmosphere, and a lot of people get to help out, and it's a really good time. And I know also, everybody's looking forward to the upcoming vacation. I know I am, for sure. And tomorrow morning, I'm going with Mr. Brody and a couple students to Pine Street Inn in Boston, where we get to volunteer. We get to be up bright and early, but I'm really excited. I've done it a few times, but because I've had classes in the morning that I couldn't miss, I haven't been able to go, but I'm really excited to go tomorrow morning. That's all I have for tonight. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I did email Emily Caffrey about finding a way to talk to the students at some point about the school start times task force.
Yeah.
And so, hopefully, we can find a way to do that, just to bring the kids the information that we've been bringing to the community and to the faculty.
Yeah.
If you guys find an option, if you think of something, and I know that Kevin Scannell is also working on something, so he might have a video or something like that.
Yeah, we talked about that. It came up a few times in the town meeting from the different students, but it kind of comes in waves. I know that we heard a lot about it when we were kind of in the earlier stages of high school, but these new students coming into the high school, they haven't heard about it as much, so we're doing our best to try and set up like a meeting, or just to try and get out all the information that we know, and hopefully, like, give you guys the information that you want to know.
Just know I'm happy to come.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey.
Enjoy tomorrow morning, in the new van.
Yeah, I heard. I'm excited.
Don't drink in it.
No eating, no drinking. Definitely.
Are you trusting Jimbo to drive it?
He drove it really quick, so...
Yeah, I know, but it was old then, so it didn't matter.
Yeah.
All right, can we move on to the financial report? Actually...
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there supposed to be superintendents, though?
No.
No, not any of that? All right, let's go to the financial report, then.
So, you have your financial statements as of January 31st, and just a couple of highlights. Some of this information becomes repetitive, but I include it in there just as a refresher every month, so you don't have to keep looking back. So, I don't have any specifics, sort of reminded. So, on the revenues, we did have two slight changes to the projections. One is, they updated their census for school choice, and we had less students than they had initially included in our school choice assessment reduction, so that we are now getting about $15,000 back into Chapter 70. That can change one more time in the spring, but it's not big dollars, but at this point in time, we're looking to pick up an additional $15,000 in Chapter 70 revenue. We've also booked interest on a CD that we hold. We only get a statement every six months, so we wait and book the revenue for the whole year, once we get the first statement of the six months. That's where you see the uptick in the interest on the financial statement. So, with those two revisions, your positive revenue variance is now up to about $126,000. Remember that we applied, knowing that we had that variance, we did use $100,000 of E&amp;D that sort of represents that money, knowing that we're not taking from E&amp;D, we're just taking unexpected revenues and applying to next year. On salaries, we did increase the variance slightly. We had a retirement in a position that when we talk about the special end reward a little bit later, you'll understand we're not going to fill it, so the rest of the year is positive salary variance for us, so that's why we've increased it to $80,000. And again, your fall coaches are expended, the winter coaches are encumbered, and probably in another two statements, we'll have the spring coaches encumbered, and you can see, because that's a big number that sort of sits out there. And at this time, we're still assuming we're going to fully utilize our substitute and custodial salary budget. So, if you're trying to figure out the variance, you have to back all those things up. On expenditures, I think the one thing I want to highlight for you is, we have adjusted the positive variance on healthcare by $100,000. So, this is going to probably not be a sort of a one-time variance, because it's several positions that we have that are either filled with interim people, or are not filled at all, so that they're carrying healthcare benefits in this current year. That's not to say that they might not be carrying health benefits next year. So, that won't have an impact on when we budget, probably keep those people in there, because more likely, when they're filled, they will take healthcare. But it is a savings that we're seeing in this year, and looked at it closer, and comfortable bringing forward an extra $100,000 to that number for now.
Dawn, is there a point at which you will do any surveying of the staff, so that we can get a forecast of whether or not people intend to stay with the high deductible or move over to benchmark?
We feel fairly comfortable that the majority of them are going to stay in high deductible for now, because they, starting in January, they had to fill out new withholdings for the HSA, their contributions. And except for a couple people, they've all signed up and are taking out what they...
So, that kind of commits you to keeping the...
A little bit. You have to be careful, because there's IRS issues that come into play. We made that clear to the people, to the employees who are on the high deductible. We do know of several that are going to go back. It is sort of, for some of the people who've had a lot of healthcare visits this year, it is a little extra work, and I think they're just going to go back to where it's not a lot of extra work. So, that's, but I don't see that as a majority, I see that as a minority thus far. But we are projecting, as I've been building the budget for fiscal year 20, and putting a little bit higher of a reserve to cover ourselves for that, because we don't know what's going to happen until open enrollment in May.
Great. And when do we get the new rates?
So, February 20th is a steering committee meeting for West Sherburne, and then they will be voted upon on February 26th. So, you have a meeting on February 26th in the evening. I plan to go to the steering committee meeting on the 20th, so I'll have an idea of what the proposals are going to be, and sort of already have some of the numbers worked up, so that when we come, when they're approved in the morning at 26, I'll be able to bring forward what those rates are, and any adjustments that we'll have in our current budget. Remember, I'm carrying our budget right now with an estimate of 10%. So, anything less than that, then I will have a little bit of a reduction.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And then, as I mentioned, we were able to purchase a 2017 15-passenger van, which actually is really nice. Andrew saw it for the first time this week. And with our insurance claim on the van that was damaged, or that was in the accident, and the trade-in value of that, the net cost was $23,000. And I think it's already been on the road about five or six times since we picked it up last Tuesday. So, it's a much-needed vehicle to add to our, sort of, our fleet. So, happy to have that on. And I want to publicly thank Chris Hendricks for all his legwork as we sort of surveyed what's out there. I've been to a couple different Ford dealers over the last month.
Do we need signs for no food and drink in the van?
I know.
Or should we order some decals?
Exactly. Water only. But it is, it is in really good shape, so we're excited to get it. I've included for your, well, actually, before I go on to capital, any questions on current statement today? I've given you an update of the capital projects, and you can sort of see where we stand. There's three projects that are still sort of open, the biggest one being the EMS software, which I updated you on, and we do have an engineering firm working on the design specs for that. We plan on doing more paving in the spring, with the locked-in price that the town of Dover has, we're able to do, right, another big chunk of the paving. And in the cafeteria, we're just waiting for the walk-in freezer and refrigeration box to be replaced. The issue was that, once we miss the summer, it's really hard for Janelle to do it during the school year, because of emptying it out. So, we've lost our little window. I think she's going to do it as soon as school gets out, but it'll be done in June. And then, we just need to order some of our exhaust ventilation inventory that we've been adding the last couple of years.
And have we been utilizing that, too? We've been using pieces?
Well, we've used all, right. We haven't reordered this year, but we used everything that we purchased last year.
Okay.
Yeah. We're waiting to sort of see where, we have had a lot of repairs this year, we're waiting to see what's going to make sense for us to add on. And then, now, this reflects a lot of the completed projects that you have in seeing. The doors are completely paid for now and everything, so it closes out some of those older funds, which is nice, because when I start showing you this in the future, I'll be able to drop some of those years, because they're completely finished. The other thing you have in this month's report is your statement of special revenue and revolving funds. We did it as of January 31st, just to keep you as updated as we can. Any questions on that? Just to highlight, you'll see money going into the athletic revolving. At this point in time, with the hockey co-ops, we have been putting all the hockey co-op payments into the athletic revolving fund. Last year, when we started the year, you remember, that was about $20,000. And so, we are able to cover the costs of the hockey program, so we are diverting the co-op fees into the athletic revolving, to sort of give us a cushion for any future needs of the athletic activities.
How do you end up with revenue on employment?
It's interest.
Okay. Thank you.
No, we make people pay us back. No.
Doesn't like clear on where that went.
Yeah, that's just the interest income on the account.
Thank you.
Exactly. And then, you do have it in the back, as we also show you the restricted gifts and where that money's coming from, and what's still out there. We have been putting an effort on trying to put some of the older money to good use. So, little by little, we're closing some of those out, but we're still working on that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so I've got, okay, so the ACED recommendations, A-C-E-D recommendations for FY20. Reminder that we're not voting on this today, it'll be a separate vote, and we vote on the budget at the end of the month. Does anyone have any questions or general comments that will help them make an informed vote at that meeting?
So, my general questions and comments regarding sort of, or all four of those, I read the recommendations and the rationale, and what I am most, what I would like to see for each of the four that were recommended by the committee to be approved, is an understanding of, for example, of Community Service Club, how many students are currently being served by this. I would like details on the history of it. I know sometimes that's covered in the committee's work, but in order to understand whether or not to vote for it, I'd like to see, you know, how many students is it serving, how often does the club meet, how long has it been in existence? You know, I know with the Global Citizenship Program, I believe that a teacher did that sort of out of the goodness of their heart for a period of time. It seems like it's something that goes on a student's diploma, they've earned that designation, and, you know, I do think that it needs somebody to oversee it, but I would want to understand what the work is involved, how many students are in it, how many students would want to be in it, and so forth. Similarly, with the sailing coach, I just want to understand how many students are in the sailing team, what is the recommendation for safety? I know difference, you know, just all those things are not in the rationale. So, you know, when it talks about with the sailing, you know, you're the head coach of sailing, and to me, it's not about the particular person in the job, it's just wanting to understand, are the children safe on the water? Do we need so many people to watch them? What do other places have? So, I would just want that information before I make a decision.
Okay. Can I add to that? Because Maggie didn't mention senior project. I also would like to see on that, how many students have historically done senior project over the last, you know, three years, five years, I don't know what's relevant, but, and sort of how that's trending, and again, the kinds of things that Maggie was saying for that as well.
And related to senior project, the comment there, that there has not been an increase in the stipend percentage, which is actually called the multiplier, that has changed in the recent contract, so it did not stay the same in the new contract? So, there was an increase?
The multiplier increased.
The multiplier increased, the ratio stayed the same.
Not the ratio stayed the same, but the multiplier has changed?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that would be related more to the scope of the work, it's not that you automatically should get a multiplier raise.
Right. Right.
Right.
But their comment, or, you know, someone wrote the comment, there has not been an increase in the stipend percentage. And so, what they're commenting on is the ratio has stayed the same, but the multiplier that's applied against that ratio has, in fact, changed over that time period?
Yeah, so you'd want to make sure that they're clear on what that is, what that means.
That statement needs to be changed.
The implication of what they're saying doesn't apply.
Apply.
Isn't correct.
Isn't correct.
Isn't correct.
Yes.
And I know in the, specifically to go back to Global Citizenship, they said this year, there's a limit enrollment, and so, I'm curious to understand how many students asked to do this, and how many students were denied, and what would be the expectation? Because I do, you know, I think that that's something that we want to support philosophically, the idea of helping our students to be global citizens. But I need to understand a little more about what kind of demand there is, and if it's getting turned down, and how.
We can get all that information.
Students have to be in that room for all four years to get the diploma thing, you know, are they going to lose out if there's a course not offered? Is this, you know, like, there's just a lot of questions about it that aren't on it.
You're right, that some of this was discussed in the ACED meeting.
Absolutely.
But you have every right to get that information as well, if you're going to make a decision about it, so that's no problem.
And on the sailing team, I know, was discussed at Athletic Advisory by those parents and representatives, and there was discussion about what other teams don't have paid JV coaches and actually fundraise for those positions. So, I believe some additional information from my committee members who are not as familiar with that information might be helpful.
So, you're looking to see what the equity, that there would be equity across?
No.
Or just what others are doing?
I'm just making the comment that there are other teams of this caliber, whether it's based on the number of people, safety, the number of teams, et cetera, who have JV, I mean, who have assistant coaches paid by other means, fundraising, et cetera, that are not part of the contract. Because all one, two, three, four positions we are considering, when we voted, they become part of the contract, and they're with us until we vote to take them away, which is extremely difficult to do.
So, I guess that's a question that I would have, is that I feel like, especially with relation to the JV coaches for sports teams, I am wondering, and maybe it's an issue...
I said JV, yeah, second.
Or whatever. Any kind of coaches for any kind of sports teams. I am curious if there's any way to link the number of coaches that we can fund to enrollment in the sport. Because, for instance, if we end up with four students on the sailing team, I don't think we need a staff of three people to supervise them.
Tough to do.
But also, just because there's a ratio to it, doesn't mean that job is filled.
That's fine. However, yes, so I'm fine if we agree not to fill jobs if we don't have...
Oh, we don't.
Right. You know, I'm fine if there's an understanding that we don't fill jobs and we don't have students taking the things. That being said, I think it's a more common issue, because I do think it matters, I do think safety is an issue, that there are some sports that require more supervision for safety than other sports. There are some sports that, you know, swimming and diving, for instance, swimming is not the same as diving, you can't have the same person doing the same things, because of the skill set issue. I also am concerned about just generally philosophically, the idea that on certain sports teams, teams have to fundraise privately to pay their coaches, because other teams do it. And I think that that, for me, is an equity on the student issue. Like, I think, assuming that parents are going to be able to cough up extra money beyond their athletic fee to pay for the supervision of their children in a sport, concerns me philosophically. Like, I want to understand to what extent are we paying for coaches to support the sports that we offer at the school? So, if there's a, I want that information more publicly available, clearly, like, some people know it, because sports advisory things and so forth.
You have the list of donations that we accept.
Absolutely.
Right. We can track that, we can definitely track that. I will say, on the sailing question, I asked that question, will this increase the number of students able to participate? And really, the answer is no, because there's only a set number of boats.
Right.
So, it's more about assisting the head coach out on the water.
Right. Well, then, my question is more around, what are recommendations for other sailing teams for how many human people, adults, should be watching children on the water? Because I do worry about, you know, drowning.
It's, the reason that sailing is a little tricky...
Yeah.
Because it's not an MIAA-sanctioned sport.
Right.
So, it's not consistent from town to town. It's, in many instances, it was a team that was put, a club, put together by parents who purchased the boats, they really wanted, same thing happens with rowing. MIAA on sailing, I don't think it's a sanctioned sport. I know rowing is not. I'm pretty sure about the sailing, but I'm mixing the two up. But I'm pretty sure that neither of those two are. So, it doesn't have the same kind of standardized, established requirements. So, that might be harder to find, but there are communities around here, we compete with them, so we can get a sense from them. And most of them have six boats.
Okay. So, we should be able to gather some kind of data on other teams that we have meets against, and how many grownups support them, you know, even if it's not run through MIAA. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Yep. No problem.
And I'd just like to come and say that we appreciate and respect the decisions that the ACED committee makes. We're not, we're not questioning their decisions, we're just trying to be fiscally responsible, because as Claire said, I believe, as you said, once it goes on, it stays on. And so, it's not just however much for this year, it's continuing on and on with the increase to the multiplier every, however, every contract or so, every year.
I think it's a good process, actually, and I haven't had this process in my past, and it's a good one. It's a little bit tedious, because it's time-consuming, but it's really important that multiple sets of eyes look at this before anything is determined officially and finally. So, I have no problem getting that information, and we will for the next week. You'll have it before the next week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to the FY20 proposed budget and the special education programming. So, Debbie, excuse me.
So, if I can just kind of introduce this...
Oh, sorry, yes. So, Andrew.
Yeah, so I need to see the slide, because I didn't bring a copy with me. But you remember last time, when we met with the joint school committees, we talked about the second component of the special education review, which was really the programming component. But just as, and so Debbie's really gonna, Debbie Dixon's our interim director, is going to speak to the specifics that came out of the recommendations, and what we're planning to do based on those recommendations. Just as a reminder, there were three questions, big questions, that we went into this audit process with. Are the service delivery models used in the three districts providing compatible, high-quality and effective supports to students? Are there any opportunities for more efficient use of resources in each district and/or among the three districts that maintain each district's vision for high-quality special education services? And finally, are there opportunities for increased general education collaboration and/or programs that could support at-risk learners prior to being identified as eligible for special education? There are three big questions that most school systems are asking. In our case, the fact that we're regional at this level, and then not so at the elementary level, adds a little bit of more layers to it, but they're very good questions to ask. And you saw kind of their recommendations, so this is really what we want to do in response to those recommendations. And I'm going to let Debbie speak to it, and I'll chime in.
Thank you.
So, tonight, we're going to focus on three areas that were highlighted in the audit report, autism spectrum disorders in programming, social-emotional learning and its programming, and the special education reorganization. And this is a very short presentation, so stop me if you have any questions.
Thank you. So, Debbie, before we go further, were there lots of other things that fell out that weren't as significant? And are there those being followed up elsewhere?
There were many recommendations. Some were cited as being immediate, for immediate action, and others were cited for in the future and over time.
And that's how I broke those out.
Summarizes in the joint meeting presentation, the summary in the month. So, this is just drilling down more to just...
Those were really the big recommendations. That is, to be... That is, to be, just to be clear, just because these were the recommendations of them, of our consultants, it doesn't mean that there aren't other things that we've identified along the way that we want to work on and continue to work on, but these were the biggies. These are the things that surfaced.
And these are the ones that have a financial impact?
Immediate financial impact.
Right.
Potential.
So we'll start by looking at some data. This is a chart of our out-of-district.
I know, it's so weird. So the blue there should say autism.
And it says autism on the.
This is something that, I just went to a presentation today and the exact same thing happened. I don't understand something translating when you mail it to yourself or something else, but the blue is what?
The blue is autism. So the largest percentage of our out-of-district kiddos are students with autism.
Can I ask you a question? Is that based on, is that the number of kids or the cost?
It's the percentage of students.
The number identified.
Yeah, so it's number of kids, not how much, it's not, yeah.
Is this joint region or just regional?
Percentage of kids, not much.
Is this like Dover, Sherburne, and Sherburne regional?
Yes.
Everybody?
Everybody.
It's everything.
All right.
Yes, yes. And that blue should say autism and it should say...
Almost fifty?
I love it.
Forty-six percent, I believe.
And what does the emotional say?
Maybe the next thirty-two.
We'll go back to that.
I'm wearing my glasses here tonight.
That's why I sat close.
In this bar graph, this bar graph shows the grade at which students were outplaced, students with autism. So you can see the primary outplacement over a three-year period, over the past three years. Primarily were placed out at the elementary level and into the middle school level.
And so when you see a twelve plus, that means the student finished high school and then did a post-high school program?
Yes. So the recommendations that we're making at this point is to increase the in-district BCBA support for the region by point four, so there'll be a point five BCBA available to the region. Right now, we have a point one assigned to the region, and it's simply not enough time, given the needs of our students. Another recommendation was to increase joint professional development, and by joint, I mean general ed and special ed, working collaboratively and learning together those skills and strategies that we need to address the needs of our students. As an aside, but I think it's relevant, we have a cohort of youngsters at the elementary level that are in need of a program, more programmatic approach to meet their needs, so we were planning to develop that at Pine Hill. And as our number, our numbers of ASD kiddos is increasing, and they'll eventually be here, so it may be that we will be developing a continuum of service that will extend through the region at some point in time.
Can I speak to that and then the BCBA piece for one second? So the, so the ASD program, one of the things that happens because we're so small is that you might have a kid or two in Dover who have these kinds of special needs, they're not extreme, or it's not like we can't handle these students, but we really, generally speaking, haven't had a program for kids with these kinds of needs, and it'll happen in Dover one year, and frequently, families are frustrated by the fact that there's no real cohort, maybe one student, so we would encourage the people that we can meet your child's needs, but they're discouraged by the fact that there's only one student. So that was really where the consultants were going, was saying, it would be really wise for Dover and Sherburne to think more regionally, frankly, I wasn't going to go there, but as a system, yes, to think more as a system so that they can, when in this case, there's a sizable, significant enough population in Sherburne, but Dover's is really not, why not allow Dover to send to Sherburne's program, making it even more of a viable cohort? And Dover, because we are not regionalized, Dover would pay the tuition as they have in the past.
So how, yeah, I was going to say, so how do we arrange that without school choice and without regionalization?
You can create a non-resident tuition if you have a special program, so they're not coming in, they're coming in as a special ed student into a defined program.
And we have a choice as to who we let in?
Well, it's an agreement between Dover and Sherburne.
Just between the two schools?
Yes.
If I am a parent in Dover, what is the advantage to me or to the taxpayers of Dover of sending my child to the program at Pine Hill versus sending my child to a program in Wellesley?
I think the advantage is that you're still in your hometown district, really, with kids who will feed into the regional system.
Okay. And is there a financial benefit to the town of Dover to send my kid to Pine Hill than to send my kid to Wellesley?
Yes.
How so?
Right now, what we do is we set the tuition at per pupil cost, the per pupil cost of a student at Pine Hill is, this year, we're paying, Dover's paying nineteen thousand, I think, one hundred and fifty-three dollars to have a student over at Pine Hill. If there's additional services, then that's charged to Dover, but otherwise, getting into a program that fits the student's needs for nineteen thousand dollars is a huge benefit versus going to an out-of-district school that, out-of-district placement, that's probably a minimum forty to fifty thousand.
So other towns, like when other towns taken in, they charge our students forty to fifty thousand, so I'm not talking about special schools.
We have, we have students who have gone to other neighboring schools. You mentioned Wellesley, Wellesley does have a program, and it's more than our per pupil expenditure.
We have a lot of them here at out-of-district.
And yes, so they do in fact charge more.
And they charge and upcharge basically from the per pupil to take our students.
Yep. And the fact that it's an established program is attractive to the families.
Oh, absolutely, but it, but like, I'm thinking about it as a Dover resident to the joint school, like, and wanting to support or not support this. So one of the benefits would be that they would be able to stay in the sister district, if you will, and then would likely roll into the regional district rather than staying in the out-of-district school.
Correct.
So, you know, thinking about it, you're going to put the program at Pine Hill, thinking about it as a Dover resident, if I wanted to utilize that program, it would be staying in the sister district and then likely staying in the district district as my child gets older, which would be no potentially a benefit to keep my child part of the.
I think the rationale for this, and again, this is really Dover and Sherburne's elementary problem right now, but it will extend into the region, but the thinking is that frequently, when these things pop up, it's too late to do anything about it.
Oh, absolutely.
And so you're not going to create a program for one student whose family is saying, we're dissatisfied with the services here. So, but if the program is established, then, you know, we will have less of those blips that you saw on that bar where in sixth to eighth grade, the kid leaves.
Do you have any information to share on what you will be using as best practices or models for the program that you expect, you're attempting to set up?
It's in development, but we expect to have a lead teacher, BCBA support, appropriate paraprofessionals to support the children. It will be rooted in ABA, Applied Behavior Analysis, practices with a real focus on inclusion, but in vivo teaching and training, explicit and direct teaching of skills that the children are challenged with, and depends on the number of students for the number of paraprofessionals that we may need.
Debbie, my second question was on the BCBA. If you could just explain very quickly what that is for those who don't necessarily work with BCBA's often.
Okay.
Why we need them?
It's a board-certified behavior analyst who looks at students and their behavior and looks for the reason, so the root cause, the function of their behavior, is it escape? Is it avoidance? Is it sensory? And then we can then program for it, develop behavior plans, and collect data against that to see that our interventions are working. So it's a real database approach to looking at students' behavior and changing that behavior over time.
And is that BCBA only available to people, to students in the autism community or other students with other special needs that are, we know would respond to that?
The BCBA is available to all students. It's primarily with students with social-emotional challenges, behavioral challenges, could be general ed, it could, and obviously, special education.
The point one at the region is not much coverage.
Oh, yeah, no.
That's where we are.
So ultimately, we'll have two full-time BCBA's.
Well, we're talking about point five, is that point five just at the region or shared between all three districts?
Point five at the region, we'll have two for the entire.
Okay. Thank you, that feels much better.
We have one now, we're adding one, but pieces about adding is going to all the different.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
And a bigger piece to Pine Hill because they'll have the program that really needs.
I have another pie chart, I wonder how it's.
I know. I think it's going to be okay.
Okay. So, so again, looking at this pie chart, the next focus area is the emotional disability category with thirty-two percent of our out-of-district kiddos are identified with the primary disability of emotional. And these are the grades over the past three years that children with primary disability of emotional have been outplaced. So really is upper elementary into middle school, and then several at the high school level.
I find this to be a really fascinating piece of data.
Doesn't really surprise me.
Yeah, no.
No.
Do you have information on when those students received their IEP for an emotional? Like, is this related to the issues were present all along for the students and they became something that we couldn't help, you know, we couldn't service really at that point? Or are these issues where the issue emerged with the students as they entered adolescence?
Probably all of the above.
I would say here, frequently, the, it may not, the child may not have been on the radar, but this is not an unusual time for, and I, so don't quote me on this, but I've heard that it's a higher prevalence of female students, kind of showing symptoms of this kind of.
Emerging mental health issues.
Thank you, emerging mental health issues is exactly what I was looking for. And that typically happening in this kind of sixteen to eighteen range, which would obviously fit here. Right, I don't have all that data to prove that, I'm just saying that I've heard that before, so that makes sense to me. And then, yes, obviously, the grades three to five and then six to eight, you know, when do we see people?
Developmental stuff.
Yes, right, there's a lot of, right, the onset of adolescence, so none of this should surprise anyone, but it does say to us is that if we're losing students there, what should we be doing in response to that?
So what we'll be doing in response to that is starting at the middle school level with a therapeutic learning center. We're anticipating that it would be staffed with a lead teacher, appropriate paraprofessional support, depending on the number of students there, as well as counseling support.
So is that like the bridge program or is that different?
So it's, it's different than, so this is, this is a really good question and it's something we've talked a lot about. So the bridge program is in fact a bridge from hospitalization or treatment of some kind.
Being out of school.
Out of school and coming back to school, but not being dumped right back into this intensive kind of academic experience, so bridging them to that. What happens frequently with bridge programs is that the students who have the more significant issues can't leave, and they actually need a different kind of program.
Yeah.
And that's this. So we actually believe at the region, we need the bridge program at the high school, the social-emotional in the middle school, and eventually, the social-emotional in the high school.
Can I ask a question? How, the therapeutic learning center, there are certain kids who have learning disabilities that are in this bed program and may also have social and emotional. How do those two programs, how will they coordinate, interact? How, how will that work and will it be, like, will kids be split off as primarily one or the other, or?
I don't think so. I think this, I see this as a fluid program, but this is, this will be primarily for students whose mental health issues really impact their ability to attend school, cope with the demands, the social demands, cope with the academic demands, they need explicit and direct teaching and support in a safe environment for the long term as opposed to bridge, which is shorter term.
And especially a home base.
A home base.
So that doesn't mean it's exclusive and it's, or it's exclusive and they are strictly in there. They should still have as many academic courses as possible, but it depends on where that kid is.
I see.
So one child might only be able to gradually make it into one or two classes, others might be able to make it into more, but they have that home base for the therapeutic support. So it's not an academic learning center, although they can get some of their academics there as well.
So is this for students on IEPs? This is for anybody?
IEPs.
Just an IEPs? So students.
To be in a therapeutic program.
So what are we doing with this?
That's, that's the next.
Sorry.
Moving right along.
To take a student out of the district environment, you need to have.
Yeah, yeah, I get all that, I get all that.
But the support for the students who are not on IEPs.
Yeah. We've got another slide.
Coming up.
The recommendations were to enhance programmatic structures around SCL across the board and to provide more robust programming and supports. And this is the special ed piece. General, this probably crosses both general ed and special ed. Additional recommendations that we'll be making is to increase school psychologist support at both the middle and the high school. Right now, we have one school psychologist who's divided between middle school and high school. She spends most of her time testing and evaluating students who are referred for special education or for their three-year re-avows, writing reports and attending meetings. And we think that their skill and capacity is much greater than that, and we'd like to extend that to also have caseload, you know, working with students with IEPs, which will then free up our other counselors to work with the general ed population, because the current, currently, the adjustment counselors and the guidance counselors are serving students with IEPs, and then they're not available to the rest of the school population.
And also, our adjustment counselors are split at the high school and middle school, and that creates some challenges for us as well.
Because right now, we have one point five adjustment.
So you're going to, so we're going to have two point O adjustment counselors? So add point five adjustment counselors, about one point five, so we're going to have two full-time adjustment counselors?
Looking at Dawn.
Yeah, we're going to end up, we're going to end up, and we'll explain, we're going to end up with two and a half adjustment counselors.
There's another half coming somewhere.
Yeah.
So the other, and so the third bullet here reflects the additional, addition of point five adjustment counselor, the other point five is in the program, in the therapeutic learning center that we just talked about. So it would be a one-O person.
Not totally exclusively, but that's really where they're designated.
So it would be sort of one and one, one at the high school and one and a half in theory at the middle school, because there'd be one plus the one point five for the program?
They sort of work across six through twelve.
So they follow students?
Yes.
Is that?
So they follow the students all the way through.
Okay.
So we'll have to see how with the additions, how the guidance one does.
Okay.
That part has to be worked out. That part has to be worked out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the thinking.
Yeah.
But that makes sense.
Enough coverage for our gen ed population that really needs it. Relief for our guidance counselors who are doing a great deal of kind of social emotional, emotional counseling and taking better advantage of our school psychologists so that they can factor into that than more than just evaluating for special needs.
The second bullet I had already talked about increasing the BCBA support. But also, in answer to your question, it will address students with the social emotional learning in addition to any child who's struggling with behaviors. We want to create more robust general ed program interventions for students that extend to the middles, through the middle school. One set possible approach would be to adopt responsive classroom, which is a programmatic, but it, an approach to social emotional learning as opposed to a curriculum. They're doing that at the elementary school and it, we would like to extend that into the middle school. Will require training of staff and implementation. Was there a question?
Yeah, no.
Okay. We would also like to explore social emotional screening so we can identify students. And there's a program called Deveraux Assessment, no, Deveraux Student Strength Assessment or DESA for short, which is aligned to responsive classroom, open circle, lots of curricular, second step, which are all curricular approaches to SEL. We'd be, it's a screening is a short cursory assessment that we could identify students who may have a need and explore their needs further and provide targeted interventions as needed. And then re-screen students at various junctures through the year to see that our interventions are actually working.
Would that be the elementary schools?
Elementary through eighth grade.
That's to the middle, okay.
And this is students on IEPs?
No. This is general ed. Yep. It'd be for, for all.
It gives, it gives us some valuable data that we don't have baseline data.
And is it written? How, what is, how does this screening work?
The screening is conducted by the teacher, a teacher, and about a month or so into the school year. And it's an eight-question survey that is, actually, it's one of the most valid and reliable assessments out there, screening tools out there. And depending on the results, that's.
So you, you as a teacher would just ask me eight questions?
Yeah. Wouldn't even ask the student. It's a checklist or a questionnaire that the teacher completes based on his or her observations of the students after the first month or so of school.
And Detrow is a school that, isn't that where this comes from?
No, no, it's separate. I thought that too, but it's separate, separate company. But it, it presses the castle standards, the competencies that we're looking for in students to.
So if this is gonna be public, can we just say implement SEL screening by teachers? So that people know and under increased joint professional development? Can we say professional development between general ed and special ed?
Of course.
I'm just sort of conscious that if we're asking all these questions, somebody's seeing this for the first time.
So.
Might need a little more vocabulary.
We know what we have in our minds.
Would you like us actually to make that change? And that way it's included kind of, we can send out revised versions to you? Or are we just making that clear for the folks at home?
We never got, we don't have this.
Oh, you don't have it?
Usually afterwards we'll post it to that.
I'll edit and we can send it out tomorrow.
So can I ask, sorry, but so can you explain a little bit more what's happening though within, with the general ed teachers at the high school? Because there was that uptick, we saw certainly the later grades. So that they are better versed in what to look for or just sort of the whole SEL concept?
So at the high school, there's not, there aren't a lot of programs directly. There's probably no time in the day to actually teach curriculum. Our hope is that by the time the students get to high school, they would have developed these skills. If not, they may be, they may be served by guidance or in special education with some support and explicit teaching. The, the goal, however, is to enhance teachers' expertise and ability to support students. And we'll have to do that through professional development, really targeted professional development.
In, in like the cast, uh, castle standards.
Right. And how to implement that and support students within the context of a gen ed classroom? What to look for and, and some of the strategies that work for kids.
So there is good professional development out there and we've actually tapped into some of it this year. Jessica Minahan came and did some training. It's really, really helpful about anxiety. You know, anxiety can completely derail a student. And you've heard of kids, for example, who just don't seem to be making it. Then they get evaluated and they come up fine. There's no learning deficit and yet they can't retain anything from class. Anxiety impacts kids that way. So this is something that we need to continue to send that message and be more deliberate. And I think that's what they're saying. And the collaboration between special ed and gen ed is making sure that, that, that messaging is going out to everyone, not just the special needs teachers. Because many kids who are not on IEPs are having these kinds of struggles and our teachers across the board need that kind of training. So it's an excellent point. It's just, there's not really, I don't think, a program out there. Also, I was thinking as you asked that question, is adding the addition, additional adjustment counseling gives the adjustment counselors, and I see Heidi here tonight, gives them more bandwidth. Right? If there's, if they're not charged with taking all of it on. That's the thinking.
Well, and to say that, I mean, Heidi and her role, you know, makes a big difference in a lot of students' lives. So.
Oh, yeah.
And high schools.
I mean, and not that guidance doesn't, and every other teacher does, but.
This is a huge thing. And by the way, this is happening everywhere. Many, many school districts across the state are attempting. They may not be able to afford it, but are definitely attempting to add adjustment counselors. And usually adjustment counselors, it's a different kind of background. It's more like a typically somebody with an MSW or a license in social work. It's a different kind of background than your typical guidance counselor, who have to, have to be by nature of their work, kind of generalists, career counseling and kind of traditional counseling.
The last area that I'd like to address is the impact of the special ed reorg. One of the recommendations is to centralize the IEP process and the administrative assistant support for that process. We started to do that earlier this year simply because the administrative assistant that worked at Central part-time also worked at Chicaring. And we just said, bring, let's, let's centralize Chicaring and let's start this process and see how it works. And then we had, as Dawn alluded to, the retirement of Mary Ann Bararty here at the high school at the end of December. So we've now assumed the responsibility at Central for processing all of the region's IEPs and paperwork. It's a, a lot for one person. We're going to get through the year. We're bringing all the files to Central and everything will be generated at Central, mailed from Central, maintained at Central. And the goal here in terms of the audit report was to make sure that there was some consistency across our IEP development, across the process and procedures. They noted that it was different in each building. And also provided, provides the ability to monitor, look at some, collect data better and, and more efficiently and utilize that to improve our process. So the recommendation then moving forward into next year, FY twenty, is that there would be two full-time administrative assistants at Central. One primarily to support the IEP process. And that includes IEPs, but meeting invitations, filing the documents, sending information to the Department of Ed. It's, it's constant. And the other admin assistant would be more responsible for the finance, transportation and general administrative support.
And doesn't this make it a lot easier when we do coordinated program maybe?
Yes, it would make it a lot easier.
As a matter of fact, yes.
There's another piece of this too that I think sometimes gets overlooked. And that is that when, when there's the school and the family potentially at odds on a, on an issue as to whether or not a child should be educated here or not. If all of those ducks are not in a row, all that paperwork, all those timelines met, all the components of the IP met. If, if somebody can prove that we didn't dot our i's or cross our t's, then we're gonna end up losing that case and therefore settle. So this is really an important piece of our being more thoughtful and vigilant. Hopefully, and that's the, the plan, more vigilant about making sure all of that stuff is done consistently through the three systems.
That's it. Are there any questions?
Do you feel, having, you know, been here for the year, do you feel competent, confident?
I feel confident.
Do you feel competent, confident? That those two positions are adequate to manage this, the caseload?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I actually started with recommending less.
Okay.
And then as I got into the year a little bit more, I said, no, we need more.
And though the files are housed at Central Office, is all of this available through an online program? So at the buildings, people can still access student IEPs and testing results and things that they might need at the building?
Yes. Everything is archived and uploaded and available electronically on the program.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So it doesn't impact in the building, people's ability to see the data that they need?
Absolutely not. And it actually doesn't, it doesn't change how they work in the buildings at all. Because generally they were emailing the admin assistant in the building to say, this IEP. They're just emailing Central now. And we're from.
Well, I would think as a K to twelve parent, it makes it much easier. You know, you're, you're dealing with the same people. It's not, oh, I'm at Pine Hill and I'm going to the middle school and I have to get used to the middle school process.
And so again, the consistency across all buildings and up through the grades will be accomplished.
Yeah. And what's it cost? Yes. What does this sparkling new cost of?
This is where Dawn comes in. Thank you. Thank you.
Debbie, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's not as bad as you think.
Oh, good. It's free.
No.
What are you giving up?
She's right. It is not as bad. We'll see. Expenditure adjustments.
We're gonna jump down to the expenditure adjustments and then also back up to the general stuff. Okay? So you'll notice that tonight we're only talking about budget adjustments that are relating to the special education SEL program. Okay? So for the, the middle school program, therapeutic program that we talked about having to have a lead educator and some paraprofessionals, we are using existing resources that we have in the sped department right now to support that program. So we've looked at what we have and where some of those teachers have been assisting some of those students that are, who are gonna move into the center. And so we are staffing that with existing staff.
Okay.
So for that program, all we're adding is the point five.
Adjustment.
Adjustment counselor.
Okay.
And part of the BCBA. So the addition, as we've been talking about, so we're increasing the BCBA by point four. We're adding a one point O adjustment counselor. But as I, if, if you heard me say, we have two point five next year. But one of the point fives is actually already told us they're gonna be on an extended maternity leave. So it's gone half of the year next year. So we're using that savings not to backfill, but to pay to have that one point O. So then that person will come back in March. So in March of next year, we'll have two point five on the staff and we will increase the next year's budget by the point five. We thought it was a nice way to sort of transition the cost of it. And then we're adding the one point O psychologist. So for everything that we discussed, oh, and your sped reorg is a neutral financial impact for the region. Now remember, you're picking up team chair help, but the admin assist and the out-of-district coordinator being switched, you're, you're actually budget neutral.
And even though that those new positions to centralize IP is management through district, you're, we're assuming them at the region, including their benefits?
No.
That will then be?
Your, well, we'll, we'll.
Through the assessments?
Right.
Of portioned each?
But their salaries are being portioned out.
Their salaries are?
Yeah. Their salaries are being portioned out. The IEP person is being.
How are you apportioning the salary?
The IEP manager is being apportioned point two five, so point two five for each school. And the finance admin person is being financed at our typical a third, a third, a third.
Why did you do it differently for each?
Because it's easy to look at the IEP and say they go, do it by building.
Yep.
And then typically for our other positions that are administrative, we look at it as by district.
Okay. Thank you.
So that the net cost, the presentations, programmatic changes that Debbie spoke with about tonight are a hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty thousand for the region.
And, but and then though, starting then, no, not the next year, but then for the following year, even with no changes, we'll add the point five.
The point five.
Okay.
Right. Adjustment counselor. And as these programs, right, then we are, we're looking at, I don't know when it's gonna be, but we create the program in middle school in order to have the continuum. We will also look at probably bringing that to high school in the next year or two after next year. And looking backwards, we talked about Pine Hill having the autism program. We're looking at building the basis foundation of an SEL program at Chicaring. So we're not doing a full-fledged program next year at Chicaring, but we're adding some of these SEL supports to, to help some of the students already there. And if there's a need for a program, all we'll need to do is add the educator in like we're doing at the middle school.
To create a therapeutic learning.
Exactly. Which everyone from Pine Hill could then come over to Chicaring for that. So we're looking at putting a base program in each of the two elementarys that we'd be able to share across those schools. And that was a, you know, a recommendation of a consultant that we should just operate smarter in that way and bring together the cohorts. So any questions on the expenditure adjustments? And then I'll talk about the overall. Okay. So at this time of year is when we get our first look at the governor's budget and what's going on in that arena. So you will see, and it looks, it looks negative, it's just because it reduces the assessments. We do see an increase in our chapter seventy of next year. Right now, it's ninety-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. I described in the memo to you that chapter seventy-one is flat. It's sort of is flat. Sometimes they do it seventy-two percent, sometimes they do it seventy-three percent. Looks like a little bit of a negative, but it, it probably end up being flat when it's all said and done. So we're able to take off before you assess eighty-nine thousand. So that eighty-nine thousand almost offsets the hundred and twenty that we are asking for. So when you look at the complete change in assessment, it's not that, that material.
I see.
So on the back page, you have the new assessment calculation. And the big change here is that we've updated the MLC, so the minimum local contribution. Those numbers also get reset when the governor's budget comes out. And so that has an impact on the assessment calculation? And it's hard to, it's sort of hard to understand, but, and what happened is that Dover's minimum local contribution went up more than half of Sherburne's. So it actually helped the Sherburne assessment. Because the minimum local contribution takes, so you take your total budget and you take all that out. So there's less assessment to spread.
All right. Let me say this back to you, because I don't think I get it.
Okay.
So for the, for the first ten million bucks, you use this. So for the, for the first 10 million bucks, you use this distribution between Dover and Sherburne, and then after that 10 million bucks, you use what's in the-
Census.
Regional agreement.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, my.
The minimum local contribution is also part of the regional agreement.
I understand it.
Right.
So this is also part of the regional agreement.
And how?
But, yeah, but that you have, it's a distinct, the state set up a minimum local contribution.
I get it.
Right, you have no choice but to assess that.
Clarifying question. What is the formula, and I should know this, by which the state determines the minimum local contribution?
It is, it's a big calculation, but it's property value, it's based on property values and your income.
Gotcha.
And they're, they're different, they take different pieces of years, like property value just got updated for this one. They update property values, I think, every two years.
Gotcha.
And the income, I think, every three years, so there's always a lag.
Okay.
But they did update the property value, which I think is why Dover had, you know, a larger increase of the minimum local attribution.
Years are going up, bars are going up.
Yeah, yeah. So when it's all said and done, if you go down to that middle table and look at the total for Dover, Sherburne, so Dover's assessment is going up 514,000, so 4.27. Sherburne's is going up 102, 1.8%. The 2% that we were allotted anyway for salaries was about 127,000, so we're actually, at this point in time, with the budget, asking for less than the town of Sherburne has granted us for this budget.
Okay. And there's still changes to come.
And there's still changes to come.
That's good news, isn't it?
Doesn't happen every day. Doesn't happen every day.
No.
That presentation may be very normal.
So there's retirement, Norfolk County, and healthcare, right?
So Norfolk County, pretty much, I think, has come in where I had estimated, but healthcare, and we're gonna go back through everything one more time. So we knew we had the opportunity on February 26th to bring you one more budget revision before your budget hearing. So tonight, we really just wanted to focus on any new revenue information we had, and then really focus on the special education and not carry the environment of talking here. So I do see potential, like I said, I'll come, I'll know a little bit more on February 20th about healthcare, and we're gonna go one more pass through the other pieces of the budget, and see now that we've got a couple more months of utilities, we're gonna check projections for utilities, and talk to building principals about anything else that's happened, because we really did this budget planning back in November, so it's a chance for us just to see what's happened in the last three months and see if there's anything else we need to tweak. But I think we feel really good about where we are right now, and really excited about the program that we're gonna be adding at all schools. So I'm hoping that because the region is not asking for as much, we do have some added costs at Pine Hill that will hopefully, you know, be able to divert some money that the region doesn't need to the elementary school. So that's it. Any questions?
Can I just clarify, or remind people that Dawn very hopefully put the budget-related meeting dates that are coming up?
Yes.
Just make sure that people put those on their calendars.
Can I ask a clarifying, another question? Those are on my calendar, but is the town of Dover, like, have they been pre-aware of the change in the minimum local contribution, the impact that has on the regional school budget?
Probably, probably not had looked at it yet, it just came up.
We just learned it right now.
Right now.
Okay, so, so we need to take that into account, that they may or may not have been prepared to-
Right, but then they do level service funding, so we're not, you know, we do have some ask that we'll have to clarify with them. Right. But then they only have to share half of that, right, of that app, because some of it goes to-
But, but, yeah.
Right. But that'll be our opportunity to share with you first, and then we have the meeting on the 27th.
That's what that meeting will be about.
We'll show, yeah.
Okay. But this is not a situation that they've had a preview of what was coming out?
No, we just, I mean, we're just-
These are hot numbers.
Hot off the press.
Hot off the presses. Thank you.
Okay, everybody good? Thank you. Appreciate it, Dawn. All right, now we've got the consent agenda, which we do need to vote on. So can I get your motion to approve the minutes for January 15th, 2019?
Second? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
All right, that was easy. Thanks. Please note the communications, and then items for the February 26th meeting, which as Dawn noticed, when we vote on our final budget, then we present the next night at 7:00 PM at Sherburne Town Hall.
The final vote will actually be on, at the open hearing.
At the, oh, that's true, though, the final file. This is the-
This will be another-
Another, another version.
Then we'll talk to, at the next, well, you guys will be agreement that that's the budget, we'll talk to the towns at the next night.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, so that's, yes, thank you.
Then we'll do the open hearing.
And also, please note that we are probably going to be adding an additional joint meeting on Tuesday, April 30th. That will be for the superintendent evaluation.
It was before, is town meeting?
It's before, yes, it's before town meeting. Town meeting, oh, no. Town meeting.
Sherburne Town Meeting is what?
It's April 23rd, so it's after the Sherburne Town Meeting. But it's before elections, I was thinking elections.
It must be the week-
It's vacation week.
The week before.
And does anybody else have anything that they would like to put on the agenda for the February 26th meeting? If anybody-
It's usually just the budget and preview offline of the presentation for Wednesday, which you will not yet talk about.
Okay, got it, thank you. But if you, do you find you have any things, then we will, then please let me know. And can I then get a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Second? Discussion, all in favor?
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.